Camera shy? Do we have the slides available?
Yeah, they were going to share a screen.
They can do it, okay. It's not even a, that's like one of those kind of art photos. It's not a regular photo.
Right.
So you are live and we're bringing everybody in.
Okay.
I just need to get Jackie in.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hello.
Nancy Stone.
Hi.
I don't think we have.
No, we never met Michael Parlovecchio. How are you? Oh, you know who I am?
You're famous now.
Am I?
Or infamous.
Infamous, that's not bad.
No, you're famous.
Just letting Jackie Richard in there in the other room.
We're ready for takeoff?
Yep.
All right, call to order. Okay, this meeting of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Special Improvement District is hereby called to order. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, by posting such notice in Town Hall and the township's website, a notification to newspapers on October 2nd, 2020, and by providing notice to the township clerk. I'd ask everyone to stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, can we have roll call, please?
Yeah, hi, everybody, Jumana Coligan.
Here.
Tracy Katz Levine, myself here, Mayor Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg. Mayor Lieberberg, are you here?
Yeah. Are we unmuted yet?
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here.
Okay, now we hear you. Okay, Andrew Morgan.
I am here.
Nadeja Nicole.
Yeah, thank you.
Michael Parlovecchio.
Here.
And Stephen Weiner.
Here.
Hello me.
You're there.
I know, I don't think she. I don't know, Tracy, did you announce me too? I'm here.
Yep, he's, you're counted, Richard.
You're counted, you're counted. Hi, Richard Wasserman and Alex McDonald.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Prior to the meeting, the minutes of the October fifteenth, twenty twenty, meeting were passed, were sent around to everybody. Did anybody have any, first have an opportunity to look at them? If you had any amendments or changes to that? If not, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Don't move.
Have a second?
One second.
Okay. All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
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 Okay. Minutes are approved. Okay, tonight, in addition to it being just a monthly meeting as we've been having, this is our annual meeting as required by our bylaws, by the ordinance that created this board. So what does that mean? Everybody got an invitation. Everybody who is part of the district was sent an invitation to come here, hopefully share some thoughts, and also to really be introduced to us. I was already introduced to somebody in the audience who I hadn't met before. And we wanted to give you a brief overview of what this Special Improvement District Board of Trustees is doing, what we hope to do, what we have been doing over the last two months, what we're doing in the near future and a little bit beyond that. So I suppose we could start with this. Do we have access or are we able to share the slides? And there we go. Okay, so if anybody watching remotely or in the audience here see that, thinking that as you were going to kick us off on these slides.
Yes, I just want to say a few words about what the Special Improvement District is about. The Cid is a true community initiatives with the purpose of promoting, growing, and supporting local businesses, commercial property owners, as well as residents. A strong Cid would be an integral part of a strong community because it truly benefits all, benefits stores by implementing actions that are geared towards attracting more shoppers, benefit commercial property owners if our town become a more desirable, desirable place to establish a business, and benefits the residents because it reinforces and increase the strength in a community. So we strongly believe that by leveraging the assets that we have in our town, by engaging with local businesses, and with an increased marketing and visibility, we can put forward the uniqueness of Milburn Short Hills and turn it into the place to be, basically, for property owners, for residents, and for the businesses. And the beauty of our mission, I'll finish by this, is that the success of the Cid would be the success for all of us.
Thank you, Nadej. And what I neglected to do is, that's our purpose and mission, but who are we? And some of us, if we're not famous or infamous, as I've been told, I'm hoping we could just introduce ourselves. We come from different walks of life, although all with one goal here. I'm Michael Parlovecchio, I'm now sitting as the chair. I'm the resident member, I'm not a business owner or a tenant, but I have lived in town for almost eighteen years, and that's why I got involved in this, in this board. So Stephen, if you want to introduce yourself.
Sure. Hi, my name is Stephen Weiner. I'm both a resident and owner of a business, Splurge Bakery. And we moved into town, I think it was two thousand and three, so it's been a while, but very excited to be. I'm also serving as treasurer for the first couple of years of the Cid.
I'm Nadeja Nicole. I sit at the Cid as a commercial property owner, but I am also a town resident. I've been in this town since two thousand and seven, and I also own and operate the bookhouse in Milburn.
Okay, going from top to bottom, Tracy, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone, I'm Tracy Katz Levine. Wow, I'm feeling like a real long timer. We've been in Milburn since nineteen ninety-six, have raised our family here. I'm on the board as a caring resident that cares a lot about our town and wants to see it, see it thrive. And that's it.
Andrew?
I'm sorry, I serve as a secretary position for the Cid.
Thanks, Tracy. Andrew, you're next on our screen.
Sure, so my name is Andrew Morgan. My family has owned and operated the Milburn Deli since nineteen ninety-one. I am on the board as a property owner. And as for why did I want to volunteer? I think because I feel a debt of gratitude for Milburn Short Hills giving my three generations down, my family, a good life, and I would like to give back. So here I am.
Thanks, Andrew. Jumana?
I am Jumana Coligan. I'm on the board of the Cid as a business owner. I own Paper Ribbon and Wrap at three two one Milburn Avenue. I'm also a resident of Short Hills since two thousand and ten.
Thank you. And the bottom square is Mayor Lieberberg and Richard Wasserman.
Hi, I'm Mayor Lieberberg. I have lived in the township since nineteen ninety-one. I am excited to be on this board and share the enthusiasm to engage all stakeholders, residents, merchants, most importantly merchants, residents, property owners, visitors. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Richard Wasserman. I'm one of the T seat members that serves on the board as a non-voting member. My wife Eve and I have lived in town, like the mayor, I think since nineteen ninety-one. We raised our four kids here. And, you know, and we just love our, love our town and want to do as much as we can to make it even better. I'll also say that I'm one of, that the mayor and I co-sponsored the ordinance that, that put, that put this bid into, into action. And I'm very proud of serving on this board with, with, with everybody here.
If I can take a point of parliamentary privilege to introduce Marla Itskin, who's also at the top there. Marla serves as the marketing consultant, I was about to say coordinator, marketing consultant for the, for this Special Improvement District Board. Do you want to say hi, Marla? Hope you're on mute.
Hi, everyone, my name's Marla, just joined the team. And I'm happy to be here to support all the merchants and the property owners and present Milburn and Short Hills in the best possible light to get business moving.
And Marla's tasked with helping us really manage social media communications, public relations, not just for the board, but eventually it'll be for all the members of the improved district, so thank you. I think it's important to note what the Cid includes, the five commercial areas. And I think we have a slide on that. So you'll see up there, it's comprehensive. It's downtown, the Upper Milburn Avenue area of Short Hills, Short Hill Station, Chatham Road area, Wyoming Business District and Morris Turnpike. So it's not just the quote unquote downtown, it's the whole township, and I think that's important. You'll see the stats that are up there, and I'll just read them. If you can't see them, it's the highway neighborhood and downtown zones. It's one hundred sixty-five properties with approximately two hundred sixty-three first floor businesses. So it's significant footprint. Commercial businesses, including upper floors, are part of this Cid. And I'm sure many of you know this better than I do. There's no Cid financial assessment to property owners for this year, twenty twenty, or next year, twenty twenty-one. The assessment will be effective in twenty twenty-two. And the estimated median annual assessment per property is, will be six hundred twenty-five.
Can I just, can I just add, it's for commercial property owners?
For commercial property owners, that's right, thank you. Okay, do we want to go to the next slide? Big reveal. So what we're going to call ourselves and be known as is Explore Milburn Short Hills. So that will be the name, that will be the marketing name that you'll see on website, on materials. It's a little catchier than the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Incorporated. So that's what we've come up with. And I think it lends itself to, and something I even heard as recently as this morning, there are a lot of hidden areas in this town that you wouldn't know about unless you really explored. So, for example, the area between, the walkway between Essex and Milburn Avenue that goes along the Raritan, that little stretch of the river there. It's a great little pathway that a lot of people didn't know existed until you started dining outside. But it's there, and it may be even an untapped little gem amongst many others. So the goal is to explore. What are we up to? So far, we're recruiting an executive director, somebody who will be the full-time person to develop strategic plan. And here are the four key areas: retail, recruitment, and vacancy reduction, business advocacy, marketing, and promotion of business districts, and beautification and aesthetics. Board of Trustees, we've introduced ourselves, what we do, why we're here. I can say personally, we have opinions and ideas, but we certainly don't have all the answers. And I, and I'm sure I speak for others, want to lean on the community, want to lean on the business owners for ideas and for thoughts, and certainly input. I'm not a small business owner, and I have a lot that I could learn from all of my fellow board members, as well as the people who make up this Special Improvement District. I introduced Marla, who's our marketing consultant. Soon she will be joined by an executive director, who we have been recruiting throughout the state and working on it and done some interviews. We are putting together an advisory board. So we want to give some more visibility to all five areas of the district and create subcommittees for areas of interest, not standing committees necessarily, but things that are coming up, things that people can really impact and bring their various talents to. And something for, you know, you don't want to be involved year-round, you just want to be involved with a special project. We need and want community input, so that's what we're selling, that's what we're asking for. We want participation from all the areas. Know if there's anything else anybody wanted to add, I'm sure there's something people want to add. Stephen, if you had anything?
Yeah, I guess I would just add that we do have a website up, just a webpage on the township website. And you'll find, you know, minutes from these meetings. I know Marla and we are working on a splash page. We have our, it'll be Explore Milburn Short Hills URL for an ultimate website that will support the Cid. We'll post all sorts of activities and other resources for businesses. And we're going to talk about some of those resources later in this meeting.
Okay. And we do have a full meeting, and we certainly have public comment session where everybody will be invited to speak. And later on, if you stick around, we'll talk about some of the marketing, and you'll see the, on the agenda, short-term planning and some other business development and advocacy things we've been working on. Does anybody else have anything they want to add to this short introduction and overview? Tracy, you've been working your tail off on these things. I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, thanks for sharing this. I think this was, I hope, a helpful overview because I'm really glad to see that we have nice attendance of community members, of the business community, and the overall community. So we did want to take a few minutes to, as we did, introduce ourselves. We've all been working really hard getting all of this going, even before we have our executive director. So yeah, excited to share on the agenda a lot that's already been accomplished and a lot that's already underway. So hopefully people found this helpful, especially those that may not have been at prior meetings or as familiar with the Cid. But I think the key messages, as you said originally, and as Nadeja said, is this is an effort, and this will be a win for the whole community, and we hope for the whole community to work with us. And the all ships rise with the tide, so let's try to, to work together.
Thanks, Tracy. Anyone else before we move along? Okay. Okay, that brings us to public comment section of the meeting. If anybody in the audience who's here wishes to speak, you can come to the microphone. Give your name and address or affiliation, and you'll have three minutes to speak. We also have, it looks like, remote participants. And Alex, I'm sure there's a way to get them involved as well. Okay, so you just need to raise your virtual hand if you wanted to speak. Penny, we'll start with people in the audience.
Hi, Vicky Powell, Shala three fifty-eight C, Milburn Avenue. I just wanted to tell you guys that it was very cute, the Halloween event that we had. It was nice to see everyone walking around town. I heard from people, I had people walking in, looking around my store. I just thought it was a nice event. You know, you guys pulled it together very fast, you should be commended. It was nice to see people walking around town in groups, social distancing, of course. But I just wanted to give you guys a kudos.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you, Vicky.
Anybody else in the audience?
We should take credit for the great weather that night, too.
Tara Purpous, three fifty-eight E, Green Nectar Market. Is there, do you guys have a calendar for twenty twenty-one of dates for meetings set?
No, we have not set our, no, we have our, we have our December meeting set is December, hang on. Is it December fourteenth? We have a December meeting set, at that point we'll set the twenty-one.
And is it going to be a monthly meeting?
So we amended our bylaws. Originally, it was set up as quarterly meetings. I think that's, we all thought that was not sufficient, so it'll probably be monthly. I think we were waiting to see what the committee meeting, township committee meetings are and what other meetings are because we're sharing space. But I think we'll be monthly.
Great, and then it'll be like a, so it'll be like a certain date, so like kind of everybody has on their mind that that's the.
Yeah, yeah, so what we'll do, Tara, is, yeah, I think we'll set it up. Hopefully we get us, whether it's a Tuesday or, you know, Wednesday, whatever it is, we'll put that together and then it'll be, it'll be posted. The annual meeting schedule be posted.
Just discussing having on a Tuesday in the off week between township committees, township committees of the first and third, so probably that second week.
Second, yeah.
That second Tuesday.
Thanks, Alex. Okay, anybody else in the room want to speak? Okay, does anybody have their hand up? Okay.
We're going to start with Kenny.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can, can you hear me?
Sure, Ken.
Great. So my name is Kenny Mandelbaum. I am a resident for over twenty years. I'm also a property owner in town, a former merchant in town, so I've covered the gamut here. So I think the goals, I want to compliment the board for the goals that they established because we're all trying to get to the same point. We want a vibrant downtown, we want a vibrant community, we want to satisfy the needs of the residents as well as the merchants. Without residents, without merchants, we don't have the opportunity for people in the community to service the tenants, to come and to purchase and to buy, and to meet the needs of the community. So they have to work hand in hand, the community with the tenants and vice versa. One of the problems that we see, sitting on all sides, is the fact that it's very difficult, the process is very cumbersome, to get a tenant into town. The way the ordinance is drafted, it's different than most towns that I've been exposed to throughout, throughout New Jersey. If a tenant like myself, well, I used to operate Annie Says and Mandy Shops. If I wanted to come into a town, all I needed to do is go in for a building permit because my use was a approved use for the town. In Milburn, unless you're the exact same tenant that's going in, same use, especially when it comes to restaurants, you have to go through this process that makes it very user-unfriendly, where you have to spend time drawing up plans, going in front of the township, not knowing if you're going to get approved. Time involved in getting through the process might be months before you're heard, before it's approved. And then the delay in starting your construction, the whole process might be six, nine months. Recently, I was working as a broker with a tenant from New York, a top-end sushi restaurant, that wanted to come into the market. And dealing with the problems that they faced in the process, they decided to go to another town that all they had to do was go in for a building permit and get, and open up their store. So these are the kinds of things that we're experiencing, and that needs to be addressed. So you facilitate, and you want to be known as a user-friendly town to the retail community. Right now, you're not known or represented as a user-friendly town. You're not encouraging tenants. Yeah, you have a great product to offer. Marla, you should have an easy job in promoting the assets of this town. But the process in which to get from start to finish, from getting approval, getting your plans approved, knowing what the issues are, and getting open could be a six-month to a year process. That's have to be addressed so that you can entice other retailers to come into the market and other development to come into the market, knowing that you're user-friendly. Especially when it comes to restaurants. If you look at the more successful towns around the tri-state area, including the Greenwiches of the world, or the Westports of the world, why are they successful? Why is Montclair so successful? Why is Westfield so successful? Because they facilitated the opportunity for tenants to come into the market, especially restaurants. I don't want to dwell on just restaurants, but whenever retailer is coming into the market, have a master plan that encompasses normal retail. The, what the product is out there today, what the availability of retailers are getting smaller and smaller. So you have a limited, more limited inventory of potential tenants to come into the market. If you don't make it easy for that limited group to come into the market, you're defeating everything you're trying to accomplish. And I'm happy to answer any questions or continue this conversation at the board's suggestion. I'm here because I had a conversation with Richard the other day, and he said to me, why don't you come and appear in front of the board and talk about some of the problems? To make sure that the board is aware so they can address the issues. I always used to say, once a customer used to complain to me, if I don't know about a problem, I can't solve the problem. I'm putting a problem on the table that needs to be addressed so that you can solve this problem. So yet you're in, at the end of the day, known as a user-friendly town, a retailer-friendly town, a place to do business, and more and more tenants and restaurants want to come into the town. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. I appreciate the words.
May I, may I say a couple things?
Who's this?
Richard Wasserman.
Oh, sure.
I just want to thank Kenny for, you know, for joining us tonight. You know, this part of our mission in the, in our bid is to advocate and to, you know, and to try to, try to make our town, you know, more vibrant and to do all of these things. Over the past year, as some of, some of you know, we, we, you know, the mayor and I have tried to, you know, introduce ordinances to make it easier, to lower the boundaries for restaurants to come into the township. But quite honestly, we had a lot of resistance from, you know, some of our residents that were very concerned about noise, or smells, or, you know, or other issues because, because it's in close proximity to their homes. So I, so and I told Kenny this, I think that some, I think it's a very important issue that we should consider, that we should advocate for, but, but also. consider, that we should advocate for, but, but also on the flip side, we have to ask, you know, commercial property owners and, and restaurants that want to come into our area to make sure that they're filled, they're going to filter the air, that they're going to be good neighbors. You know, I think that there's a balancing act and we have to make sure that we assure our residents that we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we're inviting, you know, restaurants that are going to be good neighbors also. So it is a balancing act, but I do agree with you that we have to lower some of these boundaries so we could work on our 17% vacancy rate. You know, it's very, you know, it's, it's an urgent matter and I think it's all, it's all one puzzle that we have to figure out.
All right. Do we have, I, I just didn't want to get into too much back and forth since we're just in public comment session. Thank you, Richard. Do we have any other members of the public?
Three more.
Okay, sure.
Jeffrey Feld.
Okay, Mr. Feld, how, good afternoon. Mr. Feld, you're, you're on.
You hear me?
Yes.
All right. Again, thank you for having a Zoom meeting. Prior to this meeting, I did send a letter, various questions. I hope to have responses, not tonight, but hopefully within the next 10 days to these questions. I am a resident. I'm a former business owner in another municipality in Essex County. I, I know about SIDS. I knows that SIDS are usually a Trojan horse for the Main Street New Jersey program. That's something that has to be looked at. It's interesting that tonight there's been no discussion about the lack of a 501(c)(3) determination letter or the litigation that's pending challenging the validity of this organization. There's a lot of issues that were set forth in my letter. We have council members who are in another room who have refused to show up to their depositions. And I just was urge caution to these, those trustees, especially the trustees who are not lawyers. I tried to give you a heads up roadmap in my letter. Please look at the questions. There are serious issues as to the validity of this organization. And it has to be looked at. I'm an attorney. There are things that happened that you do not have buy-in from four of the other districts. It's interesting that tonight we finally had a designation of what these districts are. Hopefully, there'll be a map that shows the boundaries. Well, based on my letter, there are, not everyone has bought into this concept. And a lot of this reason people have not bought into this concept, they know how businesses have failed in other municipalities. As to the comments by Mr. Mandelbaum, I agree that we have to be more friendly to businesses. But that's an issue that should be be handing, handled by the township committee and not this Sid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. And I, we are aware of the questions that you've sent in and they are being worked on. That's for sure. Who else? Okay.
Yes, hi. I'm Jean Pasternak. I'm a 23-year resident of Short Hills. I just have a few questions. I'll preface it by saying thank you to those volunteering their time to do this. My first question is, could, could you just clarify the funding of this Sid organization through 2022? I, I heard a comment that it would not be residents funding this, but in fact, it is the taxpayer funds, as I understand it. There are funding the Sid through through this, remaining of this year as well as 2021. Is that correct?
Well, what I can say, I did say is there's no Sid financial assessment on the commercial, on the commercial property owners. We are getting funding from the township committee, so yes, that is from taxpayer dollars.
Right, taxpayer dollars that were redirected to this activity during this year from this year's budget, correct? Is that correct?
I can't speak to how it was directed or from what budget source it came from the committee. I can just tell you that it was voted on by the committee and that's how we got some funding for the last quarter of this year, 2020. And that's, participate, we will present a budget to the township committee for future year funding.
Right. I, I just think it's, it's, it should be clear to residents exactly how this is being funded. And in fact, they are contributing through their tax dollars. So thank you for clarifying that. The second question I have is, I sat through most of the township committee meetings, not all, but most of them, even the informal discussion session where a great deal of opposition was voiced and expressed by both merchants and residents. So I just want to know what, what will be done to address some of the concerns? I mean, some that I heard, for example, were not all parts of the business district, especially those like Upper Milburn Avenue, the, the area around the Short Hills train station, et cetera, have traditionally not been included in efforts by previous constituted type organizations. But now they will be and they will be assessed the same way as everyone else. But how will that issue be addressed? And secondly, I heard that the, the just the, the overreach that some of the, the ordinance allows for with the Sid. People were very upset about some of the things that were included. So I, I feel it's really important that not just those in favor and are feeling very positive about this organization, but those that were not in favor and that had some serious concerns about it should be heard and included in this group. Maybe not as trustees, but certainly as advisors so that, you know, even though it's difficult to hear those objections sometimes, they often raise really important issues that need to be addressed and will make the, the group successful. So I just wonder how those people's voices will be included.
Ms. Pasternak, I, I have to say, I couldn't agree with you more. And I think that's one of the reasons we included those five commercial areas and highlighted those in the earlier presentation. I think it's, and I, when I say I, I think I'm speaking collectively just from this chair. I, I think the goal is if the entire township, and that means the five districts, and again, to enumerate them, the downtown, but the Upper Milburn Avenue area, Short Hills Station and Chatham Road, Wyoming Business District and the Morris Turnpike, if everything doesn't succeed, then we don't succeed. And that's our goal is to get out and to get what you've termed as buy-in. You're right, there was a lot of consternation. I'll put it mildly, but I hope that we're not cursed by the sins of our father. And if that's the prior organization or other failed organizations, I hope we don't get branded with that out of the gate. I don't think that's really giving this a chance. That being said, it's certainly our opportunity and our duty to go out and meet with all five districts. And to your point, if not as a board of trustee member, and again, we're unpaid, mostly residents volunteering our time and some of our energy to this, it's important to get people as advisory board members. And one of the things I said earlier, and I mean it is, we have some enthusiasm and some ideas, but we certainly don't have all the answers. And I think we have to get that from various constituents. So through what you're saying, I agree with it and.
I, I just hope it will be proactive and not passive. And I think that the people who, I think are pretty well-known, having spent their time volunteering as well to come forward with their objections, their concerns, I hope they will be proactively reached out to and will be included in this effort. So thank you for answering that. I do, I guess I understand from some, the previous questioners request about the 501(c)(3), I suppose it has not yet been established. Is that, is that right?
It has been established. It has.
Oh, it has. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think the determination letter.
Okay, very good. Then I, this makes my concern of something I witnessed, that your initial event, the Halloween event, even more important. I shared with the township committee at their last meeting in their public comment section as well as, and I addressed it directly to Mayor Lieberberg. I also shared my concern directly today with Tracy Levine. I was downtown and I saw the mayor handing out the Halloween treats that were, as I understand it, donated by merchants, perhaps somewhat subsidized by the budget. I don't know. I'm assuming there was a mixture of that, but you can correct that. But I also saw a candidate, a Democrat candidate for the township committee handing out those, those bags with the mayor. And while it might seem innocuous, it is not. This is clearly not a political organization. It should not be in any way construed to be one. And I think for the, the first event coming out of the gate, for that to have occurred and for the mayor to have condoned that and to have also another Democrat candidate who was standing nearby, not saying anything, nobody doing anything about that, I'm very concerned about that. And I think that that's a reputational issue as well as perhaps a legal issue. You know, you're putting your 501(c)(3) in jeopardy by doing things like that, mixing up the political campaign with this SID, 501(c)(3). So I wish somebody would address that because it was not addressed when I raised it with the mayor.
Well, I, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the mayor, that's for sure. I can say I was there. And if you were there, you also saw, listen, it's, it's a township event. You also saw a Republican candidate who I was talking to for at least 20 minutes, standing five feet from where the mayor was and whoever else was there. So I, I don't think it's fair to categorize it as a political event. I think it was a very good township event. I think it got a lot of people walking around. It got some people enthusiastic. Hopefully, it got people walking into the various stores.
So it was not intended to be a political event, right? You're saying that.
I agree that it should not be, this is not a political organization. I agree, a 501(c)(3) has to be certainly transparent and above board and cannot be a, by rule, can't be a political organization. So I think your, your, your comments are heard and I, I don't think I saw what you saw, but I'll just leave it at that.
Michael, may I ask just a question or a request? I just wanted to ask if Alex could clarify about the 501(c)(3) status because I know it was reported that we received the EIN number. But I believe that the 501s, I just want to make sure there's accurate information for everybody. I believe the 501(c)(3) is still in process. Alex, can you just clarify that, please?
It's simply this, is that by nature of setting up the Sid organization as a 501(c)(3) by statute 15A, you have that status until the IRS tells you that you do not have to fill that application out and put that forward. We are in process, working with with the, with an auditor on that to have that, have that worked on. And so it is in process. We did receive the EIN, but it's not to say that the township, the Sid is not a 501(c)(3) organization. It's just to, that it has not yet received a determination, which quite frankly, in the best of times can take three to six months. And who would think it could be, you know, just as long as a result of the situation.
Yeah. So thanks for clarifying. As the secretary, I've seen some requests come through for the 501(c)(3) determination letter. So I just wanted it to be explained that if it says that the record is not located, that's because we are operating as a 501(c)(3), but that the determination letter is a process that takes a little bit longer. So thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Ms. Riley, you're next.
Good evening, everybody. I didn't attend the Halloween event, but it sounds like it was really fun. And thank you so much for organizing that so quickly. I'm going to try to cover a lot of ground here really quickly. So first of all, I just want to clarify, so commercial space, does that include office buildings? Because we have quite a lot of those along Morris Turnpike. Is that included in this?
Yeah, I believe it does.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Secondly, are you going to have like an email list for interested parties, whether they're committee members or the public or business owners, just alerting them to upcoming meetings? Or, or just on the, on the website as normal?
You mean, are we going to send like an email blast out with our?
Yeah, I mean, if, if people say, you know, I'm interested in knowing about them, I was just wondering if that's a possibility.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that very soon in the marketing section. And the answer is yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, I don't want to cut in on your time. We're just getting email addresses and the various websites and social media accounts set up. So as Tracy said, you'll hear more about that.
I got it. It's a work in progress. I just wanted to know if that's something that you guys were pursuing. That's great. Okay, so I, I really appreciated Mr. Mandelbaum's comments and his view. I too am a Realtor, both residential and commercial in town. And, you know, one of the things I was thinking to, to really try to hone in on what we could do for quick and easy fixes and then long-term things is, would it be possible to perhaps invite Realtors in town in the commercial sector or people who operate in that sector to participate in a focus group with you guys? To try and identify, you know, from their perspective, what are the barriers and, and ideas and what could be done about that? Just throwing that out there.
Sure.
Okay, because I, and I agree with him, you know, the, the whole, the whole process is, is really quite confusing. And I, I think if we could just streamline that, it would do us all a lot of good in this endeavor. And then the last thing I wanted to ask is, I actually have been working on putting together an initiative through alignable.com, which is for small businesses to network with each other to do something that they put forward, which is called My Money Stays Local, to encourage your town, people in your town to think about making the choice of, you know, buying something or doing something local instead of outside their area. And I'm absolutely, I just want to make this absolutely clear. I'm not asking for money. I'm funding this myself. And the reason I haven't moved it forward is because I wanted to check in with all of you on how I could coordinate this with your efforts. And to that end, I was thinking maybe I should get Marla's email.
I was just going to suggest that.
Yeah, but you know, I really, I really want to do what I can to encourage people in every possible way to, you know, instead of going to Home Depot to buy something from the hardware store, go to Bunchers or at least think about it. And so I just want to try to have a conversation with how that might dovetail in with, with what you guys are doing. And, you know, if you want to approve any of the, I, I want to have like marketing collateral and actual things that business owners like Andrew and Nadej and Jemana could put in their windows and, and participate. So I just kind of want to get your blessing on, on how I could move that forward, but but in keeping in mind what your own initiatives are and does that make sense?
Sure, absolutely does. And if you, I think you're right, the first step, if you reach out to Marla and we could certainly have a discussion. I think that you raised all very, very important ideas.
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't get this going sooner with the Christmas season coming up, but you know.
It's not too late.
Not too late. It's never too late, right? So how would I get Marla's email? Do you, shall I get that later?
I think we can probably do that now. Marla, can you give that?
I can. So you can reach me at marketing@ exploremilburnshorthillsallinaro.org. So marketing@exploremilburnshorthills.org.
Okay. I think I got that. All right. Um, I don't think I have any other questions. No, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carissa.
Is anybody else? Okay. Oh, we do have one more. Hang on, just before we. No, no, you're good. No, no, you're good.
Oh, okay.
Please.
Nancy Stone, Nancy and David Finejules, installed by Nancy and David. I own two businesses in town and I'm also a resident. Hope everyone can hear me on the Zoom. Thanks, everybody, for participating and for all of your efforts. Your old volunteering and as a volunteer of the previous DMDA, I know you're, feel your pain. So I know. And it was a joyous time, too. We made a really lot of good long-term friends. And it, it was a good organization while it lasted, but unfortunately it needed to end. So I do want some clarification on the 501(c)(3). Alex, you said that the, Alex, how you doing, baby? All right, so I want to be clear about this because it's under my understanding that you can't assume that the 501(c)(3) is coming just because you applied for it. So is that a fact that you can just operate as a 501(c)(3)? That is?
You, you can, you have to apply for it and you have to get a determination from the IRS.
Alex, we can't hear you. If you could speak up or into a microphone, we can't hear your response.
The answer is yes, but you have to apply for the status and get a determination from the IRS. However, I mean, that's to say, you don't know how this organization, like how an organization is set up. You don't have any of the, you know, financial information or the board, trustees. It all has to be established before you can even apply.
But you have applied?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So it's just about getting that determination, which could take anywhere between three to six months.
So you're legally not entitled to accept donations until that letter comes to pass?
That very well may be true.
Okay, so that's, would you know that as a lawyer?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so would you know that, Michael, as a lawyer? You don't know that. So nobody, is, is there legal counsel for the Special Improvement District at this point?
As of this, we don't have a special dedicated attorney, no.
All right, so nobody's been counseling the SID. Who's been doing all the prep work?
What kind of prep work? Like?
Setting up the 501(c)(3) or applying for the EIN number?
That was done.
Or the corporation? Who set up the corporation?
By the, by the township before we were appointed.
Okay, so the town, you did that, Alex? So who specifically in the township did it to set it up?
Well, the organization itself was set up by the township attorney because of the, as a result of.
So that was Chris Falcone?
Falcone.
Falcone, I'm sorry. So he was the one who set it up? So he did that on behalf of the town for the new bid? So are they getting billed for that or are they gonna, it's a separate, or is that part of the budget?
Well, no, I think, I think, I think you're kind of confusing two things here. One is that.
Yeah, I know, we're confused.
The township committee passed an ordinance to establish the, establish the SID and a district management corporation that goes along with it. Therefore, the implementation of that policy fell to myself and, and, and Keith Falcone to make sure that that organization was established, that it was registered and that we applied for the 501(c)(3) status for that organization, which is then handed to the board of trustees.
So is everybody on the Zoom call able to hear that? For the record?
I would just ask that, we don't need to.
No, because there were some people that were complaining that they couldn't hear.
They can hear.
That was Jackie Mercer, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so they, so they, so they can hear. All right, I just wanted to clarify that. Also, in reference to the budget, I'm curious to know, you're going to be presenting a budget for when?
So we, when are we presenting it? Or by the end of the year, it has to go to the Township Committee?
So it'll be presented in the first, like in January at that point?
Yeah.
To the TC and then?
Yeah, they have to approve it.
Okay, so they have to approve it. Is there going to be public comments on that as well?
Yeah.
So the public will be able to see that budget prior to its approval?
Yes.
So is that going to be on the first read or second read? Or how is that process going to work?
I don't know how the Township Committee will handle it, but we'll deliver it to them. I assume at that point, it's a public document and available for inspection.
I think, I think what's, what's important is that this board of trustees follows the standard established in the ordinance, which is the way that the previous organization also introduced their budget, which was.
So we had two chances. Great, okay, so there'll be two opportunities for the public to respond. And so that document is going to be made public when? That budget's going to be made public at what point? Like the first meeting of the year?
No, nothing can be done at the reorg, no, no business is done at the reorg meeting.
Okay, so it'll be like the second meeting?
I don't know what the schedule is, but I'm imagining it would be sometime the middle, late part of January.
It's the, the reorg meeting is on the fifth and then that would mean that the next meeting is on the 17th. So I think that a reasonable expectation would be one.
Okay, great. So my last question is, are you going to be using the $208,000 budget for the basis of your new budget? Or the 205, which was the previous SID budget, the final previous SID budget?
I don't know yet.
You don't, nobody knows that question? Because that was part of the previous TC meetings that I've attended that you were going to be using the 205,000?
I thought you said the prior, the old.
Well, that was what was being used as a baseline for the new budget moving forward because you're going to be hiring a new executive director, which, you know, that was my problem with the previous SID, that over 50% of the budget, well, more than that actually, probably 70% of the budget was going for administrative expenses and not necessarily for the benefit of the downtown or now all of these five districts, that, that money was not being appropriated for the business community and more for administrative reasons. So that's the reason why I'm asking that question.
Yeah. As I sit here, I can't give you an answer to that, but as soon as it's, as soon as we work on it, it'll be available to be seen.
Okay, great. So, and one more thing, the 625, how did you come up with that $625 assessment?
Oh, the average.
The, the median?
The annual assessment?
Correct.
Not sure where that number came from. Have to be honest, I'm not sure.
That was from, hi, since I included that, that has been in documents since the, the, since very early on presentations about the ordinance that was calculated by the township. So that's been in many previous documents as an estimate. And that actually, Nancy, that document is up on the website on the ordinance.
I'm very well aware of the document, Tracy. I'm questioning how that 625 median came to fruition.
How it was calculated? So I, I would suggest we follow up on some of these questions because I know we have a lot to report.
I'm asking you the question, I'm asking Alex the question. If he knows how that 625 or if somebody else on the board knows how that 625 came up into play.
Sure, if you have an answer.
That would be great, thank you.
So the 625 is based on the overall valuation of the SID district. For example, let's say, I think we're arguing, I think it was $308 million total assessed valuation of the district.
Right, it was like 965,000 per property, I think it was? Point 67.
But that number then is, then that, that number represents the commercial portion of value. So the, the overall value is more than that, but you have to back out the residential portion, which is not assessed normally during a, during, during a SID assessment. That number is then taken, is multiplied by the, the rate that is, that is established.
I think it was point 675, it was?
Correct.
Okay.
Point 0067.
Right, 00, correct.
And, and that is, that estimate was using the previous budget as you, you put 205,000 dollars as a, as, as, as a, as a value that was known. And so that was from 2018 and that's where that 625.
All right, so that makes sense to me. I, I looked at the website and I saw the point 0067 times the $900,000, which basically came out to that number. But what doesn't make sense to me, and it was brought to my attention from Perry, actually, was that if you take the, and this totally made sense to me, if you take the $625 and times it by the 168 properties that you're assessing, that only comes out to $105,000. So how does the difference come about into play?
620, yeah, you can't do it though. There's far, there's way different values. The values are way different. So if you take a King's property, which is valued.
Right.
But the average was 965,000?
Correct.
So wouldn't that be the mean of all the properties? Wouldn't that be the average?
I mean, I don't want to get into math and I think we have a lot of work to do, but I can certainly go through it.
All right, well, I think that needs to be looked at because when you look at the numbers, they don't make sense. But I'd like to lock into that 205,000. And I'm hoping that more than 50% of the budget does go to the business community and not to.
Administration.
Administration, and I would like that noted for the record. Thanks for answering my questions, everybody's been really gracious. Thank you.
You're welcome. No, I'd like to move on. Okay. That's public comment. We've had, do we have any administrative updates? Although we just got a whole load of them. Anything else?
No, not.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to subcommittee updates. This is where we talk about what's happening, what's going on, what's been going on, what's, what are we planning? So the first one, we have a few of them listed here. First is marketing and that's Tracy and Jumana to discuss those points.
Yeah, okay. Excited to move on to the, the heart of what we've all been working on. And yes, I want to thank Marla for jumping on board very quickly and working with us to launch numerous things. This gets to some of the points earlier. First of all, well, we'll talk a little later about events, but Marla was a key part of the Halloween event that was mentioned and that's going to be reported on in our next section. But the other big things are, as Marla mentioned, our public name is exploremillburnshorthills.org. The website URL has been secured and that's something that's in development. Something that has already been launched is the social media. So Explore Millburn Short Hills is now on Facebook and on Instagram. So everybody watching tonight, please be sure to follow and spread the word. And to the question earlier about emails, that's been a big focus as well. I want to say our Township intern has also been doing a lot of work, literally feet on the ground, going to businesses to help build all contact information for all of the property owners and starting with all of the first floor merchants, contact information. We have also used some legacy information from the DMDA, some information through the Chamber, et cetera, in terms of compiling an email list of property owners and business owners and merchants. There's about 400 emails, am I right, Marla? About 400 already on that list? And there was an email that already went out that included things, the invitation for tonight as well as another bunch of events coming up that you're going to be hearing of. And we absolutely are going to, and there's been a, a link for collection of contact information also on the Township website and our page has been there for a while now. And absolutely, we are looking to build that email list as well of residents and others in the community to keep them posted as well. So yes, as we've said earlier, there's multiple constituents. So yes, please, Marla mentioned her email address earlier, marketing@exploremillburnshorthills.org. So if there is anybody listening that did not receive that recent email newsletter, please message Marla and she can make sure your info gets updated. And yeah, I'd like to ask Marla just if you have any other info to add that I didn't cover. Marla?
I'm sure, thank you, Tracy. Let me just say, so far it's been a blast because I, I just am so impressed with all the, the enthusiasm by the board members, by the community, by the merchants that I've met, the property owners. I mean, it's really just incredible. And what we want to build is a, a list that we know we can use when we want to talk to our property owners and our merchants, some very relevant organizations like the Chamber of Commerce. And then, of course, the community at large, people who are going to be interested in our events. And we did start collecting names at the Halloween event. I would say roughly, there's probably at least 200 to 250 emails right there that we need to get in when we're ready to do more community outreach. But importantly, we want to make sure that we can reach every member of the SID by email. So that is all of our property owners and merchants across the five areas. And like Tracy was saying, there's a lot of legwork to do that. So please help us along. If you know someone says, oh, but I didn't hear about it, please tell them to make sure we have their current information so they can get the news. And social media, of course, is going to be another way for us to get the word out.
So I'll just mention, we have been spending time looking at other Special Improvement Districts, other towns, both in New Jersey and beyond. I mean, sometimes a lot of creative ideas come from complete other places. So we've been doing a lot of that. And we will be, Jumana will be presenting later on in this meeting, the logos that have been developed that we're very excited about. So that's coming a little later because that's a decision and a voting item for tonight. So now, yeah, we can move over to the short-term planning, which also includes a lot of great initiatives, Jumana, Nadej and Jackie.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to kick this off for the group. We want to talk quickly about what we did, then what we're doing in the short term and some ideas of a longer term. So Jackie, would you like to give a brief overview of our Halloween event that we just did?
Sure, actually, I'm going to turn that over to Richard. He's going to, he presented at the TC meeting and he's, he's right next to me. So he'll, he's going to give a brief overview. And then I'll kick it back to you and then I'll kind of wrap up about some of the long-term planning. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the, this was on Friday, the 30th. We had our, we had our Halloween event. And I'm really, really excited and happy that 39 businesses from all five business districts participated in one form or another. We have like these, I'll hold this up, we have like these goodie bags. And, and when, once the word got out that there were really good goodies in the goodie bag, you know, the, the residents came like you wouldn't believe. So we had a really good turnout with Marla's good work and with all of our volunteers. All the goodie bags are gone, so we know that we gave out 200 goodie bags. But make that 199, I think I have the last goodie bag. So, so, and people were really excited about it. There's some really interesting, you know, goodies in here. And, and before people, the way it worked is people, you know, came to our table. If they wanted a goodie bag, they filled out. We were able to capture the name, address, you know, some of the contact information. And, but, but there were at least 200 families came from, from our town. And again, all of, a lot of businesses were very generous. And, and I will tell you that they, that our volunteers worked really hard. Marla worked really hard. Marla was in a very interesting Halloween outfit. And, and, but we really had a, we really worked hard. And I think I had a great time and it was good to get out there and to engage with our residents. And, and again, I was really excited to work with everybody and I thought the event went really well.
Okay, thank you, Richard.
I just, just add real quick, just to say thank you to all the merchants and everybody who participated and donated to the goodie bag as well as did the trick-or-treating and held the event. I thought it was great to see the community out and see such a big response in this short amount of time that we had to put the event together.
Jumana, you know, one last thing, you know, I would really, I'd love to read the list of merchants, but there are 39, you know, hold this up, there are 39 businesses on the list. And it just wouldn't be fair to, to take so much time. But really, all, all of our merchants, I mean, not all of our merchants, but a lot of people really stepped it up and made it, made it, made it fun.
Agreed, yeah.
Yeah, and just to repeat what you said, Richard, merchants were coming from all the districts of, covered by the SID. So that was great. Next, in a very short term, we are putting together something for the winter that we would like to kick off right after Thanksgiving on Saturday, the 28th. that we would like to kick off right after Thanksgiving on Saturday, the twenty-eighth. Jumana, do you want to speak to that? I can, I can speak to it. I don't mind. You're, you're on mute, Jumana.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead, Nadej. If you can speak to that, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, so we are, Saturday, the twenty-eighth of November is going to be Small Business Saturday, and we are going to use that as the kickoff of our winter season. So we are going to be doing two things. The first thing that we're putting together is a win, a window decoration. And it's a truly community event. We're involving our merchants who are in the art business. So Art of Reno and One River School, Art School are putting teams of kids, high schoolers, that are their students together. And they are going to go and decorate windows of willing merchants who want to have part of their windows decorated. And so this will take place, we think, the decoration probably the first weekend of December. We don't have all the details nailed down, but this is what we think we're going to be doing. Then over the course of the month of December, we would like to invite residents to go around and look at all the windows and the decorations that the kids did. We are very mindful of involving merchants from all business districts again. Coupled with that, we will put together a raffle with donations from participating merchants. And we will use this raffle to encourage people to come and shop in town, to come and visit. There will be different ways of entering the raffle, and we're trying, we're hoping to create a buzz. Last year, we did a raffle privately on our own, and we managed to put together an enormous basket that was very successful. So we're hoping that this will be the same. This will take us to twenty twenty-one. So for twenty twenty-one, we are, you know, discussing ideas. We have, we haven't decided on anything, nailed down anything yet, but we're trying to spread our attention into a different, different categories. So the first one would be what I call spot events, which are more things that are driven by the calendar. So Valentine's, Earth Days, events like that, where on one day we organize something that's linked to whatever the calendar represents. This is, this is, the, the second thing, which would be bigger, is more the recurring events, things that would be bigger. And Jackie, you can talk a little bit about this. We have a few ideas like Restaurant Week or Girls Night Out or talking about the farmer's market. And Jackie, I'm going to give it over to you again to expand a little bit on that.
Yeah, so these, these would be things also to drive participation and engagement and, and really drive traffic to our merchants. So something, some kind of springtime, Easter, launch event, scavenger hunt, walking tour that's going to, that's going to engage all, all the business districts that are included in the bid SIT and really to, to, to drive participation, talking about Restaurant Week or, or maybe Restaurant Month, maybe coinciding depending on where we are with this COVID virus, a Girls Night Out, a Taste of Milburn event, the, the idea of expanding the farmer's market, music at the market, having a, featuring a merchant of the week at the farmer's market, promoting our local restaurants, maybe a cooking demo, maybe a tie-in to the produce that's at the farmer's market, maybe have a special restaurant, farmer's market special, or a meal pickup that we could make, facilitate arrangement so that people pick up at the farmer's market, they'll order ahead. All maybe combining both the, the virtues of the farmer's market with, with our own restaurant population. Those are all things that we think that could be done relatively quickly and easily. We know, we know this year that the farmer's market was very, very popular and, and gaining a lot of traction and momentum. And we think that we can certainly enhance that and, and, and engage more, more of our, our merchants as well as our residents. So that, that's on tap for twenty twenty-one. Stay tuned.
Yes, so those would be events that can grow as well as they repeat. So, yes, longer term events. The third thing is more around trying to improve the shopping experience. And again, we just have some ideas that we're bouncing right now. Jumana, you want to talk about the townwide, maybe a townwide gift card or an idea along those lines?
Yeah, so I mean, it was just an idea we threw out.
You froze on.
It's basically a Visa gift card with specific, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Now we can.
Sorry, just saying, it's basically like a Visa gift card that would be, can be used only to participating merchants. So merchants who decide to participate in this initiative, you can buy a gift card, let's say, you know, for a hundred dollars, and you can use it at the list of all, all the merchants in any, for the five districts that choose to participate. So that's one idea we're throwing out there. Yeah, and then I'm, I don't, I'm unclear. When are we talking about the short term, like the workshop? Is that in this section too? Should I talk, mention that now, Nadej?
It's in the business, isn't it in the business development?
No, part of short term. Go for it, Jumana.
Yeah, so just, just because I want to get the word out that it's coming up on Monday. So we're offering a free workshop to any businesses or merchants in our, that are part of the SIT. So we're, we, we are having my friend Betty do a free workshop to all participating merchants. She, the founder of My Friend Betty is Betty Galvin. She's a former Short Hills resident, and she specializes in social media. And the topic for the, for the, sorry, things are popping up on my screen. The topic will be leveraging three social media platforms for your businesses during the holiday season. So I think the information is on the website, and we sent it out in the e-blast, correct?
Yes, and people should RSVP to me, and I'll make sure they get the Zoom link.
Will that, will that go, that's on the website, on the Explore Milburn Short Hills website?
Well, not, not quite yet because we're, we're still under construction.
But is it on the township website though? So let's put it up, we'll put it up on the township website, and it went out in the e-newsletter that went out to all the merchants, but we will make sure it's up on the, our trustees page on the township website. And it's also going to get posted in social media.
And also just a reminder to RSVP to Marla by November twentieth, if you can, to receive the Zoom link.
Okay, and I'm just going to finish with two more quick things with the events. One is, we are going to be looking in twenty twenty-one to collect inputs from residents about what their interests are, how our events are received. And the last thing I wanted to bring, I'm excited to announce, and I'm really excited about it because I love the idea of when the whole community gets involved. The Friends of the Library are, they have a membership, and they want to offer to their members a, a list of basically advantages from being members. And they have contacted me as a merchant to ask if I would be part of their membership program, which is basically you offer a discount to their members. And they would love to open it to any merchants from the SIT who wants to participate in their program. So this is really exciting. This is truly community involvement, like Karissa was, was bringing an opportunity earlier. And, and so again, anyone who wants to participate in this program, you can contact either Marla or myself, and we'll put you in touch with the Friends of the Library who are responsible for this program. That's it for the strategic plan.
And Nadej, I just want to mention also for the windows that the Art Advisory Council is also supplying us.
That's right. You're right. I'm sorry. I forgot that. That's right. Yes.
That's all right.
Great synergies. Just by the way, here's a little snapshot of the Halloween merchants. And just, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, so just another thank you to these, all of these wonderful merchants who jumped right in and made it really special for everybody that day. So thank you to the merchants.
Yes, thank you. It, it was really very well received. Can you tell me more about the, the Friends of the Library? What is that event?
So the Friends of the Library, so they have members, right? They, they pay a membership, and then they, they support the Friends of the Library. So different towns, I saw Livingston does it, and there is another one, Funwood, I think. The Friends of the Library offer their members some perks for being members. And so different towns do different things, but here they want to offer a ten, a ten percent discount to the participating stores who want to be part of this membership program. So I was approached as a individual merchant, not as a person from the SIT, but I, I did offer to put this opportunity out there for everybody. And, and so, you know, there are, there, there's a minimum purchase. You have to show your card. You have to be a member. You can accumulate with other offers, et cetera. Like it's, there's, there's a whole definition behind it. But I think it's a great opportunity to, the, the Friends of the Libraries would promote it themselves. They would talk to their members. We would promote the Friends of the Library. This is what communities are about.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving on to bylaws, I think I'll take that part. It's very exciting.
Michael, I think actually our voting on the bylaws was going to come a little later, by the way.
The voting, I just wanted to.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So this, this Board of Trustees was given bylaws as part of its creation with the, with the ordinance. And any amendments that we want to make can only be done upon prior approval of the Township Committee. So Tracy and I went through these and tried to make some common sense changes, like, which I'll go through. And some things we looked at and thought we had to live with the, with the committee a little while longer before we could really make a decision on what needed to be amended. But for now, I'll just hit the highlights.
And, and, and Michael, these were posted on the website.
These were posted on the website. Thank you.
So everyone can see.
Yes, and they will be once they're hopefully amended. Two changes of note, I think, and I touched on one earlier. Originally, the meetings of the board were announced as quarterly meetings. I think we, especially in the first year or two, for sure, we didn't want to limit ourselves to quarterly meetings. So we just changed that to regular meetings. At this point, I think it'll be, as Alex said, probably the second Tuesday of each month for the foreseeable future. So going from quarterly to probably monthly meetings. Another thing we thought was important, just from a management standpoint, was how to write checks. A lot of it was dependent on the availability, and frankly, the existence of an executive director. So we had to put in a provision that in the executive director's absence, at least two executive officers are signing off on, on payments, even payments less than, than a thousand dollars. So we have to have that provision because we don't have an executive director yet. We also expanded some of what we considered the duties of the executive director should be to make it a little more specific, especially with interacting with, with not only township officials, but more importantly, the businesses and other organizations, and to develop business and economic development initiatives. So we wanted to put a little more color to what we want our executive director to do. We, I think we streamlined a little bit formation of subcommittees. Again, that goes to some of the speakers who spoke earlier to their points about getting more involvement, and particularly from all segments of the community in all geographical areas. What am I missing? In the membership part, so the membership of this, not the, not the board, but the SIT itself, we wanted to make sure it was property owners were properly reflected, not just commercial and professional tenants. So it's non-residential property owners, district property owners, about having a vote depending on how much property they have and how much assessed, soon at some point assessed the property in the district. I think that's it. A couple of typos here and there. Mentioned advisory board committees, finances. And again, what we will be doing later is taking a vote on this, but it's not a vote to, to adopt them. It's a vote to accept these amendments and to then deliver them to the Township Committee for their approval. And that's really it. Not a whole lot of excitement, but something we need for functioning. So that's it. The bylaws basically spell out our duties, who we are, what we're doing, and how we'll operate going forward. That's all I have.
Michael, may I just add one thing about business advocacy? It's a different topic, but I just, Richard and I will be hosting a Zoom meeting tomorrow evening. And we've heard loud and clear Mr. Mandelbaum and as well as Ms. Riley, their, their, their input with respect to working very closely with our township partners, zoning, planning to streamline the process. And this subcommittee is going to be a resource for new businesses and a welcoming liaison for assistance and navigation through the process. Discussion, I had a brief discussion with our, our business administrator to include our zoning department within the loop of our, our meetings. So anybody that's on the call, if you send me an email tomorrow, I will send you a link to join the Zoom meeting. Of course, I know you will be on it, and anybody else that has an interest in the business advocacy piece, we welcome, Richard and I would welcome your input and your participation. Of course, I think this would be a good thing to speak about these focus groups and alignability, alignable. And then, Michael, thank you for indulging me because I wanted to share that before I forgot it and, and didn't get a chance. So thank you very much.
And Michael, can I just chime in something?
Sure.
I also want to just remind people that Marla, Marla actually sits in Town Hall. We have an office for her. She's close to, you know, she's close to the town, town officials that are in Town Hall, zoning people, the, the, you know, to Alex. So, so, you know, there's no, with the, the bid as it stands right now, it's not incurring an expense for rent or anything. And everything is very central, and everything is very centralized so we could be effective. So I just want to make that point, that, I just wanted to make that point.
Thanks, Richard. All right, the next item we have on the agenda is recruitment and human capital.
Steven. Sure. Hi, very brief report. We continue with Andrew and Mayor Lieberberg to receive resumes. We've spoken to some people, some candidates. We are still looking. We, we haven't gotten, we've done some interviews. We're still looking and hope to continue to recruit. I've been doing some calling myself, trying to, you know, run up some interest, and we posted, I think, Jackie, was it on two different websites and?
Yeah, we, we posted on a variety of municipal websites, including the one that's, it's not Explore New Jersey, but it's Main Street, Main Street, New Jersey, Main Street. And to date, we really just have not gotten the kind of traction thus far that we would, would be hoping for, but we're, we're going to continue to pursue each and every avenue as we go along the process. So we think it's a great opportunity for the right individual, and we'll continue to look at that.
All right, thank you. Next topic is, and I don't know if you touched on this, Mayor and Richard, business development advocacy?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I, I went out of order. Yes, my, my apologies. So that was the, yes. So there we are. So we, yes, that, we did, we did touch upon it, and we did cover it. Thank you.
All right, we've said it all.
Yep.
Okay, next item then is logo presentation. Are we taking a look at it and?
I think Tracy's going to share her screen. And then I could.
Are you ready for me to share? Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
The unveiling. Okay, here it comes.
Okay, so we, I put together the Okay, so we I put together this, you know, logo in three different parts. So we have a logo at the top that's colorful and sort of convenient and more, you know, that we're about business, business advocacy, supporting our, you know, our businesses. And we also wanted to convey part of the historic nature of Melbourne Township. And also that we, you know, with the gazebo there, you know, highlight some of our green spaces and all of that kind of good stuff. We also included five different colors and we're hoping that maybe we can use each of those colors to represent the five different districts that are part of the Cid. And then there's just three, you know, two other variations, different plays on that same logo so we could use it in different applications. That's basically it. I don't really have much else to add unless anybody else has something else they wanted to say or I forgot something. This is another version with other colors. So kind of a more muted version, muted, you know, more kind of, I would say, heritage sort of colors versus the more primary bright colors of the first version.
And you did this, Jumana, right? This is an internal thing. This is.
Yes, yeah, so I did. So actually, I worked on this with one of the girls who works in my shop. So we're both graphic designers, so we worked on it. She did primarily, she did most of the artwork. I just told her, you know, what we wanted to look for, what I wanted in that logo. And she just executed.
Jumana, thank you to you and Diana for all the work on this. This did go through a lot of iterations.
Yes.
I think you've you've mentioned you looked at a lot of different things. So this looks really great where it nets out. I think we did determine at the last meeting that this was going to be an item for vote by the Cid Committee. So I think this would be a good chance to also see if there was input on the different color schemes and then we can.
Then we can vote, right?
Right. Let's, yeah, before we take a vote, does anybody have any discussion or comments they want to make about it? I think it looks great. I think it hits some recognizable buildings. You said the gazebo. There's also the schoolhouse, the Millwheel. So I think we have, you know, you've hit that. It's got the five colors that are not just because you have five crayons, but because there are five districts. So it's it's got some meaning to it. And I and I like the the graphic lettering looks pretty sharp.
Yeah, I wanted it to be bold and obviously stand out and then eventually hopefully be recognizable.
Anybody else have any comments?
I think it looks great. I'm really, I really think it's great. And Jumana, thank you for all of your work on this. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Nice that we have in-house talent.
Yeah, I got to say, I love the fact that there's five colors for the five districts that that's trying to bring everybody together. I like that.
Yeah, I love it. It ticks all the boxes. It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, guys. No, I just think it it kind of reflects that, you know, we're not, we're not an urban center, but we're also not out in the middle of the country. So it's it's but they're two and two and a half story buildings. So it's I think it does a good job.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess we can take a motion to to approve the logo. Do we have a mover?
Move the motion to approve the logo.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor to approve this logo, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, there it is.
Yay, we have a logo.
Congratulations. Thanks, Jumana. The next thing we have is the proposed bylaws amendment. As Stephen saved me and reminded me, these were posted, these were circulated. Again, this is an adoption, this is not adoption, goodness sakes. This is not adoption of the bylaw amendment. This is agreement on them and the agreement to to move them forward to the Township Committee for approval. So can I take a a motion to approve the proposed amendments to these bylaws? So moved. Okay, in a second.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none. Okay, so we will. And we'll send a clean copy of this showing the showing the deletions and the additions up to the Township Committee for their next meeting. Right, next section is finances.
Yeah, yep. So thank you. Pursuant to the last meeting, we had a resolution that authorized us to open a checking account at Investors Bank, which which we've done. So we've opened an account in the in the spirit of transparency. The balance as of today is $19,052.16. We I've also created a just a reimbursement form so that anybody who seeks reimbursement for expenses of the Cid, I've asked that it be completed and sent to me. So I'm keeping records of of every expense that we reimburse. To date, the expenses have been a little over $4,000, $4,076.23. A description of exactly how that's broken down is also on the website. You know, a little bit for the Halloween event, but really it was for consulting services and an insurance expense for the for the for the committee, things like that. But it's all listed up on the website. And just as you can tell, as you, you know, we've talked about $20,000 that we we had budgeted for the through the end of the year. So we're well within when within that maximum.
Yeah. Yeah, and Stephen, I'm glad you said that it's up on the website. What we want to do is show the expenses so it's available for anyone who wants to take a look at it. You'll see where the money's going. And because we only meet once a month, sometimes it'll be, it's not necessarily a bill list like a municipal council might approve, but it's it'll verify everything that's got out, all the money that's gone through the checking account. Okay. I think that's it. Anything else on finances?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, board comments? I know everybody's had a chance to participate, which is a good thing. Anybody have any other comments? Any?
I had a comment, Michael, on the board. First, I wanted to say I I saw that it looked like there were somewhere between 20 and 30 people on the call at any one time. So I just want to thank all the merchants and community members that took the time to join us tonight. I want to especially extend my appreciation and thanks to my colleagues on the Cid Board and the Township Committee members and the professional staff that are all involved in this initiative. I I think listening to this tonight that it's really amazing, everything that we're accomplishing, even before an executive director is in place. And a special thank you to Marla for really jumping right in. I mean, she started and really helped put that Halloween event together, of course, with Jumana and others as well. You know, we are all volunteering our time in addition to our own full-time businesses and jobs. I know myself and several of us are new to a municipal committee such as this. We really love our town and our businesses. We know there's urgency. It's really sad to see some of the business closures that are already occurring. And that is why this is so important. We, I think everyone can see, we are endeavoring to operate in a very open and transparent way. You know, we might not know the answer to every question and every every point in that ordinance off the top of our minds, but there's also a lot of documentation out there that everybody can reference. And I really would ask that people reference the documentation that is posted on the website. And there's really a lot of, a lot of the questions that are asked are actually in those documents. But lastly, maybe most importantly, is we really welcome everyone in the community to be involved, to attend the meetings, volunteer for a subcommittee, follow us on social media, and most importantly, to shop at our local businesses.
Thanks, Tracy. Anybody else have comments? I I think this should roll into announcements. If we could just give some of the dates of things coming up. I know, Nadesh, you mentioned a couple of dates, I think you did. If you just want to announce those again, I think something coming up by the end of the month.
So first, the the workshop with my friend Betty Juman at 23rd of November, is that correct?
That's correct. November. At 9:00 AM, I believe. Mar, is that correct? Yeah.
9:00 AM, then.
I'm sorry, is that a and that's like a Zoom or?
Yeah, that'll be a Zoom. Yeah, a Zoom. There'll be a Zoom link. You'll receive the Zoom link after you RSVP.
Okay, thank you.
And 28th of November, it's it's Small Business Day. So it's just for us just to kick off of the winter season, but there is nothing specific happening on that day. However, we're aiming for the window decoration to take place on the Friday and Saturday the week after that, which 4th and 5th or 5th and 6th of December. We will confirm all this, but that's that's the aim. And then throughout December, there will be raffle entries and we will probably do the draw the raffle winners. I would say beginning of January, we don't have a date yet.
Just for everybody's convenience, we kind of made RSVP dates all the same. So by November 20th, to please respond and let us know if you are interested in the window decorating, if you are interested in the free workshop, if you are interested in participating in the gift baskets. And all RSVPs come to me and that's marketing@exploremilburnshorthills.org.
I want to make just one announcement, please. Also, that beginning on Thanksgiving Day through January 3rd, the township will offer free parking. Time limits do apply. So another reason to shop local, it will not, you will not incur any, any, any costs in the meters. But but the limits do apply. So another reason to come out and shop at all our districts. Thank you.
Okay. Just I wanted to announce our next meeting date. I don't know if we've if we've scheduled that, yeah. What's the?
December 8th, I think. There it's usually in between our TC meetings if I'm.
Yeah, does is that of conflict for anybody? December 8th?
I think I have a conflict.
All right, I mean, we don't have to settle it now, but so when does the committee meets on the 1st and 15th? And we're not going to do it the following week. All right, let's, we could circulate and we'll just leave it unscheduled at this point. But if there's, once we get a date and time, we'll post it certainly in advance, far in advance of that meeting. Anybody else have any comments, notices? I did want to thank everybody who came to the meeting, who both in person and and remotely, I really think that much of what was said was was constructive and I appreciated that. And I look forward to meeting more people and more business owners around town. And I know all of us feel that way. Seeing no more comments, I think we can move to adjourn.